Courtney.
Here.
You got an extra one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be there when I need you.
Okay, let me just explain how the meeting works. The first half of the meeting is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on an agenda item may do so at this time. Be advised that all comments become part of the official record and are therefore taken under oath. The second half of the meeting is dedicated to deliberation and decision making. No further comments are taken at that time. The first item on the agenda is Robert McRitchie, 366 Creek Road, appeal number 1081, would like to erect a 24 by 24 workshop in front of the face of the residence, which is against the Pleasant Valley Code. You're Mr. If you would come up to the mic and be sworn in. Mr. McRitchie, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York. Now, you would tell the board what you'd like to do.
I have the property all dug up, set, and I want to put my 24 by 24 workshop over in one of the only places that'll go on my property due to the fact that if you come down the Creek Road, it's either the Creekside or it's a mountain. I got a mountainside.
I was actually shocked at how much mountain you have.
And I actually had to dig 12 feet into that mountain to get it back and erect what you saw.
Okay. When you say workshop, are you talking about something commercial? Do you make things?
No, I'm just, uh, be to go out and take around on my retired bike footer.
A retired what? I didn't hear you.
Bike footer.
On your plot plan that you have here, it shows that you have 50 feet to the property line, and it showed 17 from here, from the front of the new garage to the property line.
Going up the hill?
Yes, okay. When was your, oh, you told me before, 19?
62.
19?
Yeah, this one house was erected.
62. Was there zoning?
No.
No. Oh, John, no. See, we were all asking.
Yeah, that was your end, yeah.
I said he was probably here.
No, but nice try.
All right, so when did zoning start and close enough?
Seventy four, yeah.
Oh.
Seventy four, yeah. It was late.
I guess so. So your house is basically non-conforming?
Yeah, setback.
Right, right.
Did a newsstand, they're sure on section two, it probably worked out well.
Actually, what we realized is that you need two variances, not just one. You need a variance to build in the front portion of your house, and then you need a variance from the front yard setback. You're supposed to have 60 feet, I think it is.
Yes.
And you need, so you need a 32-foot variance for the front yard. Now, my original question for our legal counsel was whether or not, if we grant the garage, can we grant that variance at the same time? Did you happen to, have you heard anything from any of your neighbors about?
Not a peep.
Not a peep?
No. And I mean, the property now, I mean, is vacant land owned by investment bankers in the city.
So I'm guessing maybe we should have, did they, do we know if they got something?
Each and every one of them.
Whoever the owner, that's who got it, right? Whoever the owner is, okay.
I mailed everything out. You've got copies of who I mailed it to, receipts?
Yes, I have that here.
Certified mail, yep.
All right, well, all I have to say is you need two variances. I have no other questions. We'll go around the board and see if anyone else has a question. Ron?
I think I heard you say that you have dug back into the mountainside portion 12 or 14 feet.
Correct.
What made you stop there?
Rock. It's a solid rock. That does nothing but shale.
Was that in the first 12 or 14 feet as well?
That's right. Dug into the big magus, shales in 14 feet back. If I could have gone back further, we'd have gone back further. But the problem is, the further I go back, the more I'd have to set the wall up. I don't know if you came by the property and saw the wall I was set?
I did, yeah, yeah.
Yep. So the further I went back, the higher that wall would add up.
There are no other questions.
Robert?
No questions.
Mary?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. How tall is it going to be? Is it one floor, two floors?
One floor.
One floor. Are you going to have any plumbing in it?
No, ma'am.
I have it on.
Yeah, but they're not talking into.
You want that too?
Tilt it down.
So no plumbing?
No, ma'am.
And one floor?
Yep. I can hear you.
We can't hear it when someone does the playback, so we need you to be right into the microphone. That's it, that's my only question.
Okay. Steve, do you have any questions for the?
Is there any reason that it has to be that large, 24 by 24? Could you cut it shorter to give you more of a front setback?
No, because eventually, if I get in there and start doing my little virus up there, there's going to be room to move around and work. It's going to have two garage doors and an extra door on it.
When you measured for this front setback, did you measure from the paved portion of the road?
Yep. I measured for the edge of the road back to where it was, yep.
Okay, because the road actually, the paved portion is not actually the road line. The road line is actually about 15 feet or more beyond that. So, you know, I think your variance is going to have to be almost, you know, a 58-foot variance, 58 or 60 feet.
Do we know?
I mean, that's how.
Do you have a name idea?
It's pretty obvious. I mean, if you look on Corso Access, which I know isn't, you know, the end, but the paved portion of the road is 22 feet wide, and it runs right down the middle of, you know, of the road lines. So it looks pretty accurate to me. The actual right-of-way is 50 feet. So if the paved portion is 22 feet, then, you know, obviously, the town owns on both sides of the paved portion. So I don't know, you know, how the board wants to deal with that. I don't know.
Anyone have a comment on how we can?
I thought the measurement was from the center of the road.
Nope, it was from the road edge.
No, I mean, as far as the town defines a road, it starts in the center of the road, and it goes so many feet to each side of the center.
Right.
Depending on which kind of road it is.
Right.
That tells you how many feet. I think on my road, like on Thornhill Drive, I think it's 14 feet from the center of the road, it's actually considered town property, even though the road's not 28 feet wide.
Right. The paved portion is always smaller than the actual right-of-way.
Right. So for him to determine how much of that goes into his yard, it would be from the center, wherever, whatever that is.
Right. Well, it appears, from what I looked at anyway, that from the center of the road, you have to measure about 25 feet from the center of the road to his property line.
Okay.
And I think that his shed is going to be, or, you know, his workshop is going to be much closer to the line than the 17 feet.
The property line?
Yes. I mean, that's my understanding anyway.
Steve, is that how you see it?
Yeah, it's extremely close, and I guess, I guess that we'd have to consider the town to take a look at that. I don't know how close is closest. I would think before we make some kind of ruling that we take a look at what the road situation is.
Rough if you drive down it.
It's what?
Rough if you drive down it.
And there's garage door entrances from the front?
What's that?
Are there garage door entrances from the front of this?
There are going to be facing my driveway, so there will be no more road access, it's going to all come in from my driveway. So garage door, be no more road access.
All right, that was a question as well, yeah. Yeah. All right, I'm not sure how to handle this. We can't just arbitrarily say, well, let's give them like a 40-foot variance. So how would we, how would we determine what the variance should be?
The only way I can see is to have someone, you know, go out and measure from the center of the road, 25 feet.
Between the Highway Department and John Fumo.
Yeah.
They would have to make a decision. Yeah, right.
We have to give an accurate, don't we have to give an accurate variance?
Well, that's, that's why, that's why we.
Yeah, that's, that's why I brought it up. I want to make sure that when we give you the variance, we're actually giving you the true variance.
I didn't check to see how we define.
To avoid problems in the future.
Yeah, that, if we don't have that tonight, all right, let, we have to think about that. I'm not sure how to handle that because it's really difficult to grant a variance when you don't know what exactly the variance is, like how many feet. I was all set to say, oh, you need 32 feet. Anyone have a suggestion? No one, okay.
I would look at the actual distance from, okay, the actual distance from the middle of the road, and then he would need 17 feet from the edge of the road, so add those two together. I mean, otherwise, you're holding him up for a month, and I don't know that we're going to be, if we grant a larger variance, then we're okay. Obviously, if we grant a smaller variance and somebody gets their head in the, gets upset about it, then, and they look at it and find that we need a larger variance, then everybody's going to be, he won't be able to build his garage, and he probably will, or, excuse me, workshop, and he probably will be doing it. What's your plan on construction?
It's coming for Bay Horse Cathedral, so it was not even a permanent structure. It's going to be set in there, both of them together or not set?
Okay.
Are you planning on doing it soon, I guess?
Sure, I already own it.
I would think we need some kind of impact statement from the Highway Department as to whether or not it creates a problem for them during winter plowing or any other work that needs to be done, if it's that close to the road. And I think between Baxter and Fumo, they ought to be able to take a look at that and make some kind of comment for us in order to understand whether or not it's a problem.
Did he see the closeness to the road?
He did.
Oh, yeah?
Patrick spoke to Baxter, right?
Yes.
And Fumo, all right. The understanding, I asked a question to Mr. Nelson about whether or not we can actually move on this if it needed a second variance. The answer that I got from Jim was that as long as no one was opposed to the application, and we don't have anyone here that's opposed, and we could actually grant it based on whether or not there needs to be any other consideration from the road frontage or from Baxter or any of those.
That's why I said, you know, give him the maximum.
Right.
And then, then everybody's safe. I mean, you know, it's not so much about our.
You have to determine what is the maximum.
Well, we're talking, what did you say, 22 feet? How, 20, what was it, 22 feet?
20?
25?
It's 25 feet from the center of the road.
Okay.
To his property line.
So it looks like it's only 15. It looks like it's only 15, right?
From the edge.
And that to the edge of the road, so not from, right.
So nearly 100% variance, correct?
Well, it's 100% anyway because he wants to put it in front of the house where it isn't allowed at all.
But that, that's a different situation.
Yeah, that's a different variance, right.
So you said the road is 22 feet, right?
You're saying it's a variance?
No, she said.
Paved portion, paved portion.
He says 15 on here, but that's only.
15 to the edge of the road.
To the edge of the road.
So that's 25 feet.
Because you need a what, 60? Am I crazy? Is it 60 foot setback from here, from the road?
60 is what I heard.
60, yeah.
60, okay. And we're looking at 15.
And 10 at least, right, 15.
So it was mentioned here that John Baxter looked at this, and he said that he didn't have a problem with it?
Nope. I would say that I would have Pat looking over.
And the question was whether or not there's going to be another driveway, and the answer was no.
No.
Right, so.
I just used that to get the construction equipment in and out, so it wasn't driving across my driveway.
All right, so, I'm sorry, so once the shed is built?
Yep.
There will be no, no exit from the road except your driveway?
My driveway, that's right.
That's existing already?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody have any more questions? We'll leave this for deliberations.
Tonight.
Okay. You can hang around and wait till we're done later, or you can wait some more.
Yeah, but you know, we're, we're in.
All right. The second item on the agenda is Joseph Alchieri, appeal number 1082, 49 Woodland Drive, would like to erect a porch office addition in front of the residence that is 39 by 11. The required front yard for LBR zoning is 60 feet, but the setback for this will only be 38. So he's requesting a variance of 22 feet. Mr. Alchieri, did I say it correctly?
Yep, that's good.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York. I have proof of notification in the newspapers and the neighboring properties for actually all of these items on the agenda. So tell the board what you would like to do.
I'm just trying to put a front porch, one story right up the front of the house, and then enclosed in that porch, a small office as part of the house.
Do you have some sign, some sort of business that you would run out of the house?
Yeah, I'm self-employed now for 15 years, and I run my company out of the house, so no, I don't have clients that come to the house. It's just a workspace for me.
It's a what?
It's just a workspace for me.
Oh, okay. So you don't have anybody coming? It's not really a home occupation.
No.
Okay. Ron, do you have any questions for the applicant?
In relation to our discussion with the previous gentleman, when you measured your setback, where did you measure from?
Yeah, I just had a survey done on the property, so they actually, I have it if you want to see it. He drew on the survey map. It's actually from the property line, not from the road. So the setback I put on there is actually from my property line, which is like 10 or 15 feet down from the road.
Okay.
So you, the 38 feet then are from, is from your property line to the?
Yeah, if you measure from the front of my house to the actual road, that's about 70 feet or so. So I thought I needed the variance, but then when I pulled the survey out, it was 15 feet down, and that's where it came into play.
So that says to you that the town owns that property up to your property line?
I can show you on the map if you want to see it.
Sure.
Yeah. So I measured from here, which is the actual road line, and then the survey.
Don't always measure from the property line, isn't it?
The paved portion is just about 8, that has nothing to do with it.
Like I said, the actual setback.
So why are we measuring from the middle of the road?
Well, it just gives you a better, not everybody knows where the property line is.
Honestly, I don't have a cul-de-sac, it's huge.
Yeah, but the difference here also is that he's on a cul-de-sac, so it isn't as if car was in mine. I mean, you know, you take it each case individually, so.
Right. I have no more questions.
No questions. Mary?
I just want to say thank you for making a complete application, putting, answering all the questions with explanations that makes it easier, having plans. I really appreciate that.
Of course.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Steve, do you have any questions?
No.
John?
No, I just, and he had it staked out, too, which is thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
And Mr. McRitchie had it staked out, too. It makes it a whole lot easier.
Oh, a lot easier. It's pretty obvious what you want to do, and the fact that you need the variance is pretty obvious, so I have no other questions either. And apparently, there's no audience that has anything to say, so.
You got any?
Okay.
Thank you.
The third item on the agenda is Charles Holsizer, appeal number 1083. We have not heard from them today? We have not heard from them today?
I've not heard from them at all. I was at the house twice.
He may be ill. He might be ill. Um, so I would suggest that perhaps we make a motion to adjourn it to next month?
Second. I'm so moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. What's the date of next month's me, oh, it's on here? Drew, oh, no, it's on here. July?
I might have it in here.
July twenty-third.
Second, right, there you go.
Twenty what?
July twenty-third.
Thank you.
Yeah, as a matter of fact.
Okay. Take care of that one. Well, I guess then we're back to number one. We'll close this portion of the public hearing. Um, somebody make a motion?
So I'm moving.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's go back there. Okay, Mr. McGrishy, appeal number one zero eight one. You want to go through the balancing test?
If you'd like.
Well, what are we discussing?
His, his, um... The garage and the variance that he needs.
All right, but which, but there are two variances.
Correct.
Are we doing each one individually?
There's only one variance in front of us, correct?
Yeah, but he does need, I asked Jim about that.
But we don't know the parameters of that second variance.
Right. But I don't want to make him come back.
No.
And pay the fees again, so.
Okay, so how do we, well, when we...
Well, John suggested that we gave, give him what we like.
The maximum that we, that we can, uh...
That we think he needs.
I mean, I'm talking a hundred feet, but, uh, if you take the twenty-two feet and you add the seventeen, seventeen, I believe, no, fifty, uh, twenty-two and fifteen is thirty-eight, right? No, thirty-seven. Take the thirty-seven feet, then you're safe on the variance.
I, okay, I don't get the math. I don't get the math. I, I keep the graph.
We gotta do the math better.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I don't get it. You may, you're, I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm just saying.
I'm never wrong.
I know that. So I, for the one that was not brilliant in math, you'll have to...
No, you got, you're talking twenty-two feet. Yes, ma'am. You're talking twenty-two feet. It isn't. I thought we had twenty-two and, uh, the fifteen. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. It's gotta be sixty. Um, (sigh) all right, hang on. Twenty-two, there we had fifteen, it's supposed to be sixty, right, right, okay. Fifteen should be sixty, so that's, uh, forty-five. So we got twenty-two and forty-five, sixty-seven.
Well, that's more than he needs. He only needs sixty, right?
Well, he needs sixty feet.
He needs sixty and I think that the, the workshop is only a few feet from the line. So he's gonna need either the full sixty foot or fifty-seven or something like that. I mean, I don't know, I, I didn't measure from the middle of the road, so I don't know exactly. No, if, can we do that?
I, I didn't hear what you said.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, talk, talk to your speaker.
I just suggested, can you say the full sixty feet and then note that you're going to amend it when you have the actual footage for that, so that he doesn't have to hold off.
Can we amend it like that?
I am not...
Or can we grant the variance based on the number of feet that the applicant needs when it's measured?
But if we grant the full sixty feet and we don't know exactly where that line is, are we really giving him permission in a green light to come even closer to the road?
Well, he can't get much closer than he is.
I know.
If we grant, if we look at the full sixty and I, I figured sixty-five, but if we look at that, then that's the absolute maximum that he'd need. And we are basing that on the drawing he has given us. So consequently, that is part and parcel of, of the appeal.
What do you say, Robert?
I don't know how the town defines that particular road. I didn't look that up.
Well, they should all be consistent.
Well, no, I mean, like, like forty-four is a different definition than Cornhill Drive does as far as what's required on, on the distance from the center of the road.
Oh, the setbacks, it's sixty. Front yard setback is sixty.
Okay.
From the property line.
From the property line, correct.
So you're saying you want to grant him the full sixty feet? Better to overestimate than underestimate. Is that what the question is?
I would think it would be better to overestimate, yeah.
Does everybody agree with that?
Now, wait a minute, aren't we charged with giving the, the least?
Right. However, this parcel is so unique that I don't, no matter where, even if he put in half that size garage, he would need variance.
Oh, no, I think, no argument for me. I don't know, I just like things accurate.
I, I do too, but I don't want to make the applicant come back, pay fees again for that.
Well, they, they wouldn't charge him fees again, but still in all, he owns, he already owns the shed.
There's no one next to him to...
Right, no one is complaining.
Right.
I think so.
Obviously, you know...
What do you think? Is it all right to do that? All right. What do you think, Steve?
I'm still struggling with the, if the center of the road to where the end of, the, where the, the end line is considered Pleasant Valley. And at that point, what's the distance to the building? And that's where the variance would have to be, right? So, uh, the question is, is it twenty-five feet from the center to the end of the road, roadside? If it's twenty-five feet, then what's, then how far is it from the twenty-five foot line to the house? And then the difference is going to be how much you allow him, right? Is that the way I'm seeing it, or?
Yeah, but, but we don't know that.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what concerns me. I don't, I don't know, nobody's taking that, that dimension. We're taking the dimension, this, the fifteen feet is from, from the end, end of the blacktop.
Right.
All right? So on that fifteen, there's another...
So with the, then he doesn't own what's in the road anyway, so all he has is fifteen feet.
Right.
No matter what, right?
Logically, that makes sense, yes.
But, but the fifteen feet, there's another, what, ten feet of road property that's, that's Pleasant Valley.
Right. Yeah, so he...
So that means it's five foot...
It's five feet.
Between the road, between the end of the Pleasant Valley road to the, to the building.
Right.
And if that's the case, we're, we're giving him a variance of fifty-five feet, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Is that the number?
Okay.
When his, when the letter of denial was written, why did it not address the setback? Cause that, you know, it landed here without having to go through these gyrations.
Right, right.
Where it should have been spelled out as to what the planning, the zoning administrator believed the setback should be.
Right.
Well, it was missed, clearly.
Okay.
Uh, we have the same thing on the case that we are adjourning until next...
With the same problem, right.
With, uh, drive, with driveway, for example, and obviously, the zoning inspector did not look... I mean, that's what caught my eye, uh, Mr. Holzizer there, um, he's going to have two driveways, which is a no-no. So, you know, his, uh, variance would have to include a condition that he takes out the other driveway. And why the, no offense, I, that's another miss by the zoning inspector. So I, yeah. Yeah, uh, I mean, it has to be fixed and I, I checked with, with John Baxter today and, you know, that, sure, a road is a county road, which doesn't need there and there, that has nothing to do...
Right, we're not working on that one right now, okay.
Has nothing to do with Mr. McGrishy, so.
All right, so does everyone feel comfortable if we grant him, um, the variance to have the garage built in front of the house, which is actually, looked to me like it was eleven feet from the front line to, from the front line of the house to the end of the garage where he wants to build it. And then for a second variance, um, fifty-five feet for a front yard setback.
In my mind, they're co-mingled. I mean, if you give him a variance to build it that far in front of his house, then...
Yeah, then you're... Well, I suppose it could be looked at like that. But we like our numbers, so.
Well, you, you picked the twenty-two feet, right?
When I asked, when I asked Jim about this, cause I knew in my head it was two variances. So, want to do the...
I don't know. I, I wish that we could just, um, be more accurate. I think for the property owner's sake...
Right.
And for the town's sake, I, I, you know, I hate to put it off for another month, but I really think that we need to, to do it properly. You know, we're just guessing here and, you know, I, I don't know.
Well, it shows fifteen feet from the edge of the new garage to the road.
Yes.
To the, just to the road.
Right.
So we know that that's fifteen feet.
To the paved portion of the road, correct. But not to the town's right, not to the end of the right-of-way. You know, I mean, that's just, it depends on how the... The town owns a fifty-foot right-of-way, which is called Creek Road. But only twenty-two feet is actually paved of that fifty-foot right-of-way.
Well, that means that he's living on town property. No.
No, he's five feet away.
No, he's not.
Five feet.
No, no, his, his house is, his house, um, well, I don't know, maybe it's not, maybe it's closer than twenty-eight feet, but, um, I, I don't, you know, I don't know. It depends on how everybody else is, feels about it.
Usually, the, the right-of-way is, is based on, uh, you know, where they could put the snow in there if they're plowing the road. Uh, if, if you look at almost anybody's house in town, you're gonna find their mailbox is about two feet from the road.
Right, which is probably within the town right-of-way.
Which means it's on the town right-of-way.
Right.
All right?
Exactly.
But, uh, that, that's neither here nor there. If we, yeah, my feeling is, uh, fifteen feet, we need, uh, sixty, okay, uh...
I think that's all we can go with. I, I don't, I can't think of any other application where we said, you know, the, whatever the town right-of-way is, we always went with, to the road. Or the property line.
The property line, which is, I mean, the, the town, the right-of-way and the property line is a common line. Property line ends where the town road begins, so.
So that would mean there's no space there for anything.
Five feet.
Huh?
Five feet.
There's probably a few feet, yes, there probably is. But I don't know exactly how much that is, so it depends on, I don't know, if you're comfortable doing that.
Normally, I would not be. However, this is a really tough parcel to do anything with, anything whatsoever. Um, the house is non-conforming.
Right.
The whole parcel is non, half of Pleasant Valley is non-conforming, actually. So, um, I'm not, I don't, I don't feel as pressured as I usually do about being down to the inch. Cause there's no one on one side of him who's gonna complain. There's, there's nowhere for him to go.
Right. All right, well...
But there's nowhere for a vehicle to go either.
For what?
A vehicle, an accident on that road.
Well, most of us don't plan our front lawn for an accident.
I understand, but we're talking really close to the road.
Oh, I know, I know.
I move that we adjourn until we have more specific measurements.
I disagree.
Everybody, I know Kathy feels that way.
I, I second that. I'm sorry. I just think that it's in your best interest that we get the accurate numbers.
Okay, you want to take a vote on that? It's been seconded, so all those in favor of adjourning this till we get more information?
Aye.
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 So, so it's Mary, Kathy, Ron. Robert, is it you? I, I, okay, one, two, three, four. What'd you say, Steve?
I said, I think we ought to adjourn it until we get more information.
Well, that kind of covers it then. It's five to two. You said no, right?
I would like to see, I would like to see a document from both John Baxter and John Fumo as to whether or not this creates a potential hazard to the town of Pleasant Valley with, with being as close to that. If, if they're comfortable with it, then I'll go, I'll go along with it. We just don't know if it's five feet, if it's eight feet, if it's eleven feet. So what are we, what are we asking for? Are we asking for a fifty foot? Are we asking for fifty-five foot? That, that's all I want to know. Once we have the data, then we have to just make a decision based on that.
Okay.
Could we, um, I mean, is there a possibility that we could have a special meeting?
I was, I was just gonna suggest that.
You know, maybe we could do it in a week.
So that we don't hold you up for the whole month?
Right.
Yep.
And the only thing is, it has to be, how much notice do you need in the newspaper?
You don't, you say at this meeting when you're gonna hold the meeting, then this will suffice.
Okay, oh, okay. All right, so the...
So if we can get to John and John...
So we can adjourn it?
Tomorrow or Friday.
All right.
Then they can take a quick run and make a decision.
You need ten, ten days? What notification do you have? Cause you're gonna have to...
If you second meeting tonight, then you don't need to have a separate notification.
Oh, you don't have to notify, you don't have to put a notice of it. However, it is differing a little bit. We'll have to ask Jim because of the second variant. If we have that opportunity, should we, all right, okay.
If somebody could, who's gonna measure, who's gonna do the measuring, so we know?
Patrick, I guess, who does that?
Who does the measuring?
It's gotta be Patrick, right?
I would say either Patrick or John Baxter would have to, I mean, he's the highway.
Uh, Jim did say that this advertisement in the paper essentially was vague enough to cover both variances, so we wouldn't have to advertise again.
Okay.
And who will do the measuring, so we know?
Whoever you requested.
Whoever usually does it, right?
Well, that's, I don't know who usually does it.
I don't know.
Do you know who usually does it?
It's gotta be either John or Patrick.
John Fumo or...
Right, it's gotta be.
We don't, we don't, this is not normal. We don't normally have them do it, so my guess is when you ask the typical video.
I, I would think that John Baxter would have information on that road as to how wide the right-of-way is and, um...
That's what, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Okay, so do, did, do we have to make a separate motion or to adjourn it to July? Okay, so do, did, do we have to make a separate motion, or to adjourn it to July, whatever that date was?
Are we looking at a special meeting?
Are we doing a special meeting?
Well, we can, yes.
I, I think we should do a special meeting because I, I hate to, you know, have Mr. McRitchie wait a month, you know, just because of, you know, it's really kind of a technicality, but I think it's an important technicality.
Well, let me do July two.
July second, next week?
Let's wait a minute, what date is, what day is that?
Second is Wednesday. You got him in the roof, he's on.
No, I'm just verifying, next week, that's all.
Is, uh, is the room open? What day the weekend's at?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Second is Wednesday.
I'm sorry, Wednesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday is the second.
Second is Wednesday, here you go.
All right, so, does anyone use it usually on a Wednesday?
What time are you thinking doing it?
Seven, like, always, or?
When's planning, pl- no, planning's on the third, so we, we, we're gonna be in front of planning.
It's only the one application, I mean, we, I can do six if it's easier.
I can do any time, I think, I can do noon.
Yeah, we could even do it during the day, if, uh.
That's what I say. All right. You wanna go for six, and then if somebody has a meeting planned, we'll be out by then.
Yep.
All right, six P M.
Oh, six, okay, six P M and a second.
July second and six P M.
On July second?
Seven to six P M.
Okay.
Sorry about that, that, uh, at least it won't be too bad.
Okay.
Leave it.
You can leave it, yeah. Okay, Mr. Altieri. Does, anyone have any comments on this one? You wanna do the balancing test?
If it makes you happy.
It will make me happy. I use a lot of his, uh, he did a great job filling this out. Okay. A lot of paperwork, Charlie. Okay, question number one, will there be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties if the variance is granted?
I say no, I think it's, uh, will blend in beautifully with the rest of the.
Yeah, everybody else, almost everybody else has a porch anyway.
Okay, Steve?
No.
Kathy?
No.
No.
Robert?
No.
Uh, Smith is absent.
Ron?
No.
Okay, the answer to that one is no. Many homes today enjoy the appeal and functionality of a front porch without changing the character or being a detriment to nearby properties. Question number two. Can the benefits sought be achieved by any other feasible method which would not require an area variance or a lesser variance? Per the applicant, this is what I wrote, so you could, per the applicant, the existing placement of the house is the only way to enjoy the addition of a porch. I don't think it can be, that he could get, uh, anything could be achieved by any other feasible method.
No.
Kathy's shaking her head, no.
No, if you want a front porch, you have to put it in front of the house.
On the front of the house. Good one, Mary. Robert?
No.
And Ron?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna get this down to a science, I'm telling you. Is the requested area va- variance substantial? Um, I said C number three on the application, cause I thought the applicant did a nice job with it. He said the addition is four hundred and twenty-nine square feet and modest in scale relative to the property. It aligns with similar improvements in the neighborhood and maintains appropriate spacing from nearby homes. Good answer. Uh, so is the variance subs- substantial, I say no. John?
No, I mean, I know we're not suppo- I know we're not supposed to, uh, increase, uh, non-compliance, but, uh, based on where the house is a house, already, based on our zoning is.
Right.
Non-compliant, so, no.
Steve?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Robert?
No.
Mary?
No.
Ron?
No.
All right, I'll agree on that one. Will the proposed area variance, if granted, have any adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? I say none as expected, many parcels in the area have porches with no adverse impacts on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. So if, my answer to that is no. John?
No.
Steve?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Robert?
No.
Mary?
No.
Ron?
No.
All right. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? I, I believe that all variances are self-created because. However, that really, I'm not sure why that question is on there. Because I think that you have to have a desire to, to improve your home in some manner to need a variance, right? All right, the application's question to number five was pretty good. It said the project is homeowner-initiated, but the need for a variance is due to the home's original placement before current zoning. Good answer again. So is the alleged difficulty, yes, I think it is, but that really has nothing to do. John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes.
On the benefit to the applicant improves functionality, curb appeal, and increase home value and design consistent with other homes in the neighborhood. I really liked your application. Huh? We don't get them often. Okay, so, um, I would take a motion to grant to Joseph Altieri. All the way down here. A twenty-two foot front yard variance?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Though, anyone opposed? You're all good.
Thank you.
Have a good week.
We do have.
We do.
Some minutes. I found, I only found one error. Page, it was page three, however, where's my, uh? Okay.
You got it, sir, thank you.
Please call, before you come down, please call, like, call the office that day to make sure everything is still, okay?
Six P M.
All right.
I found one error.
What do you?
I think, maybe. It's on page two, the very top, where it says, two garage doors and a man door, or is that a man door or a main door? Oh, okay, well, then that's not an error.
He did say man door?
Really? I think I remember that.
I have page three. Where it says, Mrs. Bamba, I believe the eighteen inches that you need is because it's right on the property line. I think line should be the end of the sentence. The neighbor lives to the left, right, facing the house, she lives to the left. You know, when you read these cold?
That's all I have.
Left, right.
Anyone else have anything on the minute? Okay, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
So moved.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Mary, I'm gonna write up the oath thing so that you can do it, and I can save my dry mouth.
Yeah, make sure I know what I'm saying.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Take a motion to adjourn?
Oh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one's ever opposed to adjourning.
Can't understand it.
Lights out.